All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask one of our youth and government students to come forward and lead the invocation, Adrienne Cox. And everyone, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your head for a word of prayer. Eternate God, our Father, we come to you once again just to say thank you, oh God. Oh God, we come to you just asking you to touch each and every person standing here as we are here for Youth and Government Day, not only just for us, but for you, oh God. God, we ask that you touch not only the youth council, but also the councils sitting here with us today, oh God. Oh God, we decrease so you can increase in us, oh God. We give you the praise, the glory, and the honor for your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Adrienne, that was a very good job. Very good job. You've been, that young man's been sitting under some preaching.
Yes.
Where do you go to church? Empowerment Temple? Okay, all right, all right, well, good. Good job, good job. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee, Recreation Committee, Work Session, and City Council Meetings held on April 17.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 13th through the 19th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right, just for the students, that's us paying last week's bill. Proclamations, mayor?
I would like to ask Ms. Clarice Robinson to come up, please. Clarice, Harold Robinson was born July 20th, 1950, to elder Buster Harold and James Harold. Why they laughing at him?
Hey, I think you left that number out, that 19 something.
That's a lot of smart people born July, I was born July 21st. Anyway, 1950 to elder Buster Harold and James Harold. She was educated in the local school system, graduated from Carver High School in 1968. Clarice has been married to Paul J. Robinson for 31 years and is the proud mother of their daughter, Paulette Patrice Robinson. Clarice is an active member of the First Baptist Church of Alabama City and, there's a glare, let me get this thing. First Baptist Church of Alabama City and serves on the church's financial, as the church's financial secretary. Clarice Robinson began her career with the City of Gadsden July 22nd, 1981, and has worked for 36 years and nine months in the Personnel Department. During her tenure, she has interacted directly with most, if not all, of the city's employees. Clarice, in addition to her duties as Personnel Clerk III, Clarice serves as Secretary Treasurer at the Gadsden Civil Service Board and is a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Clarice is retiring May 1st, 2018, and will be honored with a reception on April 10th. And now therefore, I, Sherman Goughton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do here by proclaim May 1st, 2018, as Clarice Robinson Day in the City of Gadsden, and express our appreciation for the many, many years of dedicated service, congratulating her upon her retirement, and extending best wishes for her future endeavors.
To the mayor and this beautiful council, I would like to thank you for the recognition and my so-called friends that I will talk to later. This has been home for 36 and which would be the 37th year since I've been here. I've been with most of you more than I've been with my family because you work from 8:00 to 4:30 and you interact with each other. I have seen a lot of people come and go, and now it's my time to go. When I got this job, I came for an interview, and this was when my extension of my employment had just run out the week before. And I was at home sewing when Karen called and said, "You need to be in the mayor's office at 12:00," and it was 11:30, you know? And so what was I gonna do? I didn't know whether I had everything on, but I didn't know they closed for lunch, but I was trying to be on time. And I was on the phone with a girlfriend of mine as I went for an interview. I don't know anything, they're not gonna do nothing, you know? And I could hear that little buzz in the phone, but I thought it was just a telemarketer or somebody. And my brother came to the house, he said, "You getting ready to lose a job being on this phone?" And he told me, and I said, "You lying." He said, "I've worked in a steel plant all day, and my plate, I was sitting there eating. Do you think I was gonna leave it to come up here to play a joke on you?" So that was the beginning of my year. So my, God has been good, and I thank God for the job. And I think the young people here today, you have many jobs, and you may not have a one, but do the best you can on it, and then the others can say they were a good job, and you leave with a good reputation. And lean not on your understanding, but lean on God's understanding, and he will carry you through. Thank you.
I'd like to also say that Ms. Clarice and I took some dance classes together. Is Becky Davis here? Clarice, one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. Thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-one candidates on the nation's organ transplant waiting list received a life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplant in 2017. Of those, 501 received an organ transplant in Alabama. A new patient is added to the register waiting list for an organ transplant every 10 minutes. Twenty individuals die each day waiting for an organ transplant. Nearly 114,864 men and women and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantations, of which approximately 2,512 are on Alabama's list. 5,430 candidates on the national waiting list died waiting for an organ transplant, which did not come in time. Of those, 191 were on Alabama's waiting list. The Alabama Organ Center is a nonprofit, independent organ recovery organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy. Alabama supports the Alabama Organ Center's life-saving mission. Therefore, I, Sherman Goughton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, hereby proclaim April 2018 as Donate Life Month in the City of Gadsden, and we honor all those who have given the gift of life. We focus our efforts on the extreme need for organ and tissue donors, and we encourage residents to designate their donation decision and share the decision to donors and family members.
Thank you, mayor, so much. One of our other jobs is to educate citizens on the importance of registering to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor, and we just did that. We have a room full of new students. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
We definitely appreciate the work that you do in terms of driving awareness and the meaningfulness of organ donation, so we definitely appreciate that. And Ms. Clarice, we love you, we love you. Even when you don't wear your best suit and your pearls, we love you, we love you. I can tell you that for many of you that don't know, I worked at City Hall for about a year, a little bit over a year, actually, back in 1990s groups. And so she was one of the first stops I had to make, and I'll never forget, she may not remember this, but I'll never forget her pulling me to the side. She knows my parents, so she pulled me to the side and kind of grabbed me by the collar, and she said, "Don't get up there and embarrass us." And I said, "Yes, ma'am." And then she hugged me, and that's just the kind of person she was. She gave you that, she gives you that tough love, and then she gives you that love. And that's the kind of person she is, that's the kind of person she's been with her daughter, Paulette, for a number of years, and that's why Paulette's so successful. So, Clarice, we love you and appreciate you, really do, really do. At this time, I'll ask Deborah Gaither, Director of the Gadsden Edwah County EMA, to come forward for a special presentation.
I'm not Deborah, but I... My name's David Elliott. Deborah couldn't be here today, she has a sickness in the family, asked me to do this. And while I'm here, today is, or this month is, April is National Volunteer Appreciation Month. And so, one thing I wanted to bring up was that we had over 4,000 volunteers from groups across the county and even other counties that came to the cleanup at South Side and Rainbow City. I think, you know, that's an outstanding number from the tornado back on March 19th. So they really showed up in numbers, and we at the EMA couldn't do our job without volunteers. Which brings me to the next reason that I'm here. We would like to recognize a longtime volunteer who started way back, and I don't have the dates like I do with Ms. Robinson, but he started back during CSEP at least, which CSEP is Chemical Stockpile Emergency Preparingness Program, if most of you remember that, from the Aniston Army Depot. And at that time, we gave out emergency alert radios to every household in the county. And he was instrumental in passing those out and programming the radios. Since then, he's spent many hours and days volunteering. Even today, he is presently, he is the Shelter Manager of the New East Gadsden Tornado Shelter that just recently built. And the man I'm talking about is Chapman Sturtavant. Mr. Sturtavant, would you come up, please? Thank you, clerk. Let me read, I've got your presentation here, it says, "The Gadsden Edwah EMA greatly acknowledges the honor, hours, and selfless dedication of the citizens, to the citizens of Edwah County by Chapman Sturtavant, and hereby named the EMA's Annual Volunteer of the Year Award, the Chapman Sturtavant Volunteer of the Year Award, in his honor on the 24th day of April." And we're gonna, we're gonna come up with the name Volunteer Emeritus. We thank you so much.
Okay, appreciate it. You know, in life, I have some instances that I have a funny feeling coming on. Sometime I find out what it is, it comes to light, and I had one this time, and this is what it's about, see? I'm glad it wasn't anything, FBI, nothing looking for me. So I appreciate this honor, really appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I told y'all, all good things come out of District One.
One last thing I would like to do while I'm here, since we have this award that's, we're gonna, the EMA's gonna try to do this once a year, give someone a Volunteer of the Year Award, and it'll be in his name. So at this time, it's my honor to present the first annual Chapman Sturtavant Volunteer of the Year Award to Magnum Waldrop. And that's his real name, Magnum. Magnum has been a very valuable asset to the EMA for several years. He's always at our CERT classes and helps with CERT. He's been nearly like a full-time employee since the 19th of March. He and I delivered tarps in the middle of the night and different things in the rain and all that. So he's there when we call him, he's usually, usually there when we would call him. He does have other things, like he's also a volunteer fireman at Iva Lee and Reece City. Yeah, Reece City. So we have to, yesterday, we sent him on a mission, and in about five minutes, I believe Fire Department was calling, so, and then he was headed east instead of west. So at this time, I'm gonna give you this plaque, it says, "The Chapman Sturtavant Volunteer of the Year Award presented to Magnum Waldrop in appreciation for your dedication and hours of selfless service to Gadsden Edwah County Emergency Management Agency, April 24th, 2018." Thank you.
I really wasn't expecting this, it really means a lot. I've been helping out with the EMA for numerous years, and I was here earlier the day before the tornado hit and was here, like you said, I've been here ever since, and every time they need, I try to be here when I can, and I just enjoy being able to help out when I can. I appreciate this.
Hey, we wanted to take the opportunity to thank the EMA for both those very notable, those very notable presentations. I think it's a great honor to have an award named after you. So, Mr. Sturtavant, that's a huge honor. And then congratulations to, congratulations to our first recipient. So again, we appreciate it, and thank you guys for fostering a community of volunteerism and dedication, that means a lot for us. All right, so item number nine is unfinished business, and we do not have any unfinished business today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1,000 Penny Street in District 3. State of Alabama subject to the possible rights of redemption by Ryan Gochet being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case involving a burned house in January of this year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 911 South 15th Street in District 5, State of Alabama, subject to the possible right of redemption by Rodney Wright being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in October of last year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3515 Georgia Avenue in District 6, Joe W. Ramey, Amy Ramey, and Regional Land and Development LLC being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we filed this case in September of last year, there've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move to abate, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I want to say no, opposed, that house looked too... Councilman Worthy, can I interject here a little bit?
Sure.
I had a house on Lakefront, looked pretty good, we voted to push it down, we had never got around to pushing it down. I've had homeless people, people walking off the streets, ending it, and we've had the police over numerous, numerous times, and a couple weeks ago, it burned up. These vacant houses, we've had two others in Alabama City where people went in and did drugs and killed themselves. If we have a vacant house, then nobody's gonna take care of it, you know? We're just, something's gonna happen inside when we don't know it. I mean, I've got houses all over doing that. I wish to reconsider and vote for this, please.
I'm sorry, I must have said no.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay, I think we have, everyone was yes with the exception of Councilman Worthy, is that correct?
Yeah.
And the motion does carry to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can that house be reclaimed, Johnny?
Can I, can I swear, father?
I'm not asking for a resolution to demolish, I'm asking for a resolution to abate. We look at every case after, but I can't even go on private property without a resolution. And so if there's a possibility of rehab, all of our rehab cases start here, and then we take it from there, so.
Well, on that note...
We'll look at that for a possibility.
Okay, on that note, I'll change my vote.
Okay, I'll record your vote as a yes now at this point. So it's a unanimous vote to adopt.
A lot of these houses, we go into rehab, though, we have to try to sell them, and we don't usually, you know, get our money back most of the time. Sometimes we do, it's just a gamble, you know, what we take on it. And they go by the tax assessment, right, Mr. Harbison? And what, you know, assessed that, I'm guessing over there, but I better not guess, 'cause probably $20,000 or $30,000.
And again, I'll just, I'll make just a point for the young people in attendance, it's, we, there are a number of folks who miss kind of understanding the process. The city is not interested in taking any more houses or property into inventory, because that's more grass for us to cut and more property for us to be responsible for. What we would like more than anything is for private property owners to take care of their property. That's what we want, we want them to pay the taxes, keep the property up, keep the grass cut. When they don't, we owe it to everyone to identify the nuisance lots and be responsible in terms of getting them cleaned up. And what happens when we do that sometimes is that we end up having to invest in properties that we otherwise wouldn't have been, so that's your tax dollars being spent because at some level, somebody didn't take care of a pretty basic responsibility. So I always like to just kind of touch on that so people don't get the opinion that the city is after property. Trust me, that's not a business we want to be in. But we have to, because again, those nuisance lots, to many of the points that Councilman Cannon made, those nuisance lots have to be cleaned up.
Can I add? I know it said a lot that all we do is sit up here and tear down houses. I know it's said a lot that all we do is sit up here and tear down houses. But some people don't live next door to these houses. And if you live next door to these houses that are rundown, you've got rodents, you've got drugs. I went in a house where it was a brick house. It looked nice. On the inside, it was a shell and there was a gas can. And a house next door to it, if that house had have caught on fire, then the next house would have gotten burned up. So, people who don't take care of their property, who let it run down and let the houses run down, if you don't fix them up, then the neighbors are the ones that complain. And so, it's our responsibility to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and clean. So, if they don't keep up their house and they've got all these different activities going on in it, I'm personally gonna vote to tear it down if they don't pick it, if they don't fix it up.
Council President, can I add to that? Another lesson on how we condemn a house. Mr. Harbison, which is a building inspector, he's got another guy, Hepson. They get a call at City Hall about a house or some of us tells them about a house that needs to be looked at. He goes out there and he sees it's not fit to live in or something wrong with it. So, he puts a condemned sign on it, an orange condemned sign. Once that sign's on there, the owners have 120 days to come up here, talk to Mr. Harbison or get a permit. And all these houses that were due, evidently these peoples not came up here. We sent them a letter in the mail. Mr. Harbison did tell them to come today. They didn't come today, so they've had ample time. You know, they've had five or six months at least to fix these houses up on this case today.
And Mr. Council President, I also have the same problem in my district. In fact, last week, they went down to a house that looked good on the outside. But until this... We gave them permission to go on the property. You couldn't tell whether the house was any good or not. And they found out the house is just terrible in terrible condition. So, you know, the neighbors keep calling us wanting us to do something. But it's a process and it takes time to get those things done. And they have been very good as far as my district is working with me in getting those houses taken care of.
If they're good houses, we're gonna keep them.
Items 13A and 13B are our next public hearings. And they're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition work that's already been performed. And we have two locations. 1104 Hurst Street in District Three, $2,666.40. And 13B, 1106 Hurst Street in District Three, $3,391.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to either of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there any discussion?
This is on work that was already done. We already knocked the house down and we'll put a lien on the property. We do not take control of the property. The city doesn't own it. We just put a lien on it. So, if they go to sell the pro... Excuse me. If they go to sell the property, then we can try to recoup our money, the city's money.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Our final public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for grass cutting work that's already been performed. And we have six locations. 340 10th Street North in District Two, $131. 935 First Avenue in District Three, $131. 906 North 8th Street in District Three, $191. 807 South 6th Street in District Five, $131. 420 North 9th Street in District Three, $311. And 422 North 9th Street in District Three, $191. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt all six resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
As a point of discussion, I'll just note that, again, these are liens that have been placed against property because the city has been forced to go on the property and actually mow the grass. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all six resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all six.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3378. This is for field lighting at various soccer fields at Gadsden State Community College. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Littleton Electric Services. And the amount is $318,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Again, as a point of discussion, you heard the mayor earlier today talking about why getting a technical degree or technical credential might be important, being an electrician. That's what's in front of you. $318,000 for a pretty simple job. Pretty simple install for an electrician. All right, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a request from the Building Department. This is authorizing the Building Department to establish an early payment plan scheduled for nuisance abatement demolition liens. And I ask for unanimous consent.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Okay, any discussion?
This is a payment plan for like the demolition that we've already discussed. And according to this payment plan, there are four different options. You have a one-time payment that's 50% accepted. You have a 12 equal payment, 24, 36 equal payments. But this will be a plan that you can get to pay off your lien for demolition.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to recommend that we request by the Engineering Department to hear this resolution today as an item, new item.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is the resurfacing of South 11th Street from Randall Street to Forest Avenue. And it gives the engineers that's working on this to fix the sewer lines on it, which is what they're doing down by Gadsden City High School. And that's to be done before we do the resurfacing. And I know it takes time to do this. But these guys have to get it right. Because we've done so many roads and then have to come back and cut them up and just mess them up. So, this is a... To get that done at the same time.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have another one for an Engineering Department to request to run easement down by Gadsden High School so that they can change the ownership of this right-of-way to the city so that we can finish the highway.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is just a legal document to give the right-of-way to the city of Gadsden so we can kind of finish the road down there by Gadsden City High School.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one, please. Ask for unanimous consent. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2017 budget for the HUD Community Development Block Grant and amending the city financial year 2018 budget for HUD Community Development Block Grant Street Improvement Accountants budgeted $330,933.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Thank you, Council, Council President. I'm Kay Moore, Director of Downtown Gadsden. Saturday night, if you don't have any plans, this is gonna be a great free concert at Coosa Landing. Tasha Taylor, for y'all who don't know her. I think her claim to fame is her dad, Johnny Taylor, who was a great musician back in the day. She is our headliner. Shane Givens, who is an attorney from Center, and his friends will be playing as well as Albert Simpson and his band, The Contingent. So, we are really, really excited. This is gonna kick off at 6:30. We're gonna open the gates at about 5 o'clock. And you can bring your chairs, your dinner, your coolers. We will have some food vendors out there as well. So, if you forget and you need something to eat, we'll have something there. But everyone is welcome. The parking is going to be east broad, between East Broad and East Chestnut, behind Jack's, that big lot that the city owns. People ask me, what can I park here or there? I said, I can only tell you you can park where it's city-owned property. If there's a business that's closed and you might feel free to park there, we can't give you permission. But if you see somewhere you think the business is closed, you'd probably be okay. We also are thankful for our sponsors. People are calling from all over the southeast. We're getting a lot of calls from the Atlanta area and around. How much are tickets? It's free. No, she can't be free. How much are tickets? Now, because of our sponsors that we have gotten this year, the tickets are free. There's no cost to come. It's just gonna be a fun night on the Coosa River. The stage will be set up facing the river. And then we're just... This is the second year that we've done this. And I have to give all the credit for this to Steve Gilbert, who raised all the money, and Robert Smith. They both work for insurance facilities. And they've kind of put their real jobs on hold to make this happen. But all money that's raised, the sponsorships in excess of the expenses goes to downtown Gadsden. So, it allows us to continue improvements in downtown Gadsden. We're just really excited to have this happening again. And we hope Saturday night, if you're not busy, come out again. Tasha Taylor, Albert Simpson, and Shane Givens will be putting on a great musical show. We hope everybody will come out and see it. So, if you have any questions, feel free to call my office, Thank you very much. Any questions?
You did mention that it was free, didn't you?
I did mention that it was free. Yes, it is free. So, yes, that's... And again, that's a great thing. And what we like to do, you know, when we do First Friday, it's free. When we do Third Thursdays, it's free. Musical Mondays is free. So, we have a thing for downtown. We try to make everything that we do to be free. Our major fundraiser, of course, you know, is Sunset Seeps, which is in October. But we just want everybody to come down and appreciate our beautiful city, the river, Coosa Landing, the walk-in through there. So, there'll be great things to do out there. So, come to the free concert Saturday night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kay. Before Renee gets here, I do want to pose a question to our city attorney. And I don't know. I may be speaking out of turn. But is there any way that we could engage, as a city, if we can engage the businesses around to come to some terms or agreement in terms of using their space for parking? I mean, I hope we have that problem. I hope, you know, we start running out of parking spots. But is there anything we can do?
Well, I mean, that's really enough to the digits or something. We can approach them and ask them if they say, "No." "That's fine."
I don't know, Mayor. We talk offline about who might be the person or people to go out and do it. I think Shane's volunteering.
I would think it'd be easier to sign.
The paper gonna fall anyway.
Yeah, that's right. That's a good point. Yeah, for the people that didn't hear Shane, he says, you know, he reminds us that next year, we won't even have this issue because the venue will be done and all of that parking will be ours. But, yeah, we've got a little bit of a challenge this year. Again, I hope that's a problem we have. That means that the event's well-attended and it's been worked a while. But just something to consider.
Hi, I'm Renee Baker. I'm the Community Development Planner for the city of Gadsden. And I just want to make the public aware that we have a program through the Community Development Department. It is paid for with U.S. Housing and Urban Development money. It is a federal program, federal funds that the city receives annually. We do emergency housing rehab and repairs for homeowners' property. If... It's all based on your income. And feel free to call our office. We'll do a little quick pre-application on the phone, see if you qualify under the program, income-based, as I said. And we can do a lot of emergency repairs to your home to keep you in your home so your property does not fall into disrepair and end up under Mr. Harbison's on his list to be abated or condemned for demolition. Our number's 256-549-4532. And we're on the third floor here in room 310 of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
So, next Tuesday, May 1st, is shaping up to be an exciting day. In addition to Ms. Clarice Robinson's day, we are also going to have a groundbreaking ceremony at the new Miranda Park. So, immediately following the council meeting, we'll all head down and turn over some dirt at the Miranda Park. It's a... They're already getting ready to get going. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Remarks by the mayor and council? Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to say, all of you that are graduating, a lot of times you think you might not could do this or you might not could do that. If you work hard, study hard, whatever you end up doing, you know, there's all kinds of different trades you can get in, jobs. But what you do the next five to 10 years will determine how you live for the next 60 or 70. So, you can do anything anybody else can do. I assure you, if you just put your mind to it. So, we wish you good luck and hope that you do that. Also, the Housing Authority, I think, next week has the Esteem A, B, and Honor Roll banquet. I've been going to it. The people who make As and Bs, they get to come and eat over at the Carver Rec Center. Parents can come with them. There's a bus that picks them up at each address. But it's bothered me the last couple of years. We'd like... Two years ago, we had about 14 or 15 medallions. of years, we'd like, two years ago, we had about fourteen or fifteen medallions, they're really a big metal thing with a ribbon around it, a picture with a mayor, a certificate to frame, and then the next year, we had eighteen that nobody picked up. And so I'm urging all the parents in the Housing Authority, aunts, uncles, whomever, to get the kids on there. All you gotta do is put them on the bus and bring them back, 'cause if they get rewarded for making good grades, they're gonna try to continue to do that. So just be sure to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What was the date for that esteem banquet?
I don't know without... Shane, do you know the date?
Thursday the third.
Thursday the third, okay. All right. Councilwoman Toad?
Uh, yes, I'd like to announce District One meeting Monday, April the thirtieth, six p.m., at the NER Family Life Center. And I'd also like to, also say kudos to Mr. Studdard. Mr. Studdard is truly my brother's keeper. Uh, he works over, he doesn't work, but he really takes care of Hugley Park over there, makes sure it's not damaged as it could, could be, so I'd just like to let him know. And he's a supporter of District One, whoever sits in this seat, 'cause he comes to the council meeting every Tuesday. So I want you to know that I appreciate you, appreciate what you do, and continue doing it. Thank you.
Somebody said earlier, he probably deserves an award for sitting in here every week.
That's true.
All right. Councilman Echols? Councilman Worth?
Uh, I would just like to say, thank you all for coming, the kids, and kudos to Ms. Hardrick for bringing them every year and working with our youth. And, uh, we need, uh, more teachers and more parents to get involved, and more mentors to get involved. Like, we had Old School Weekend and, uh, Bubba Treadwell, the Old School Weekend went very well, well-attended, a lot of people there, and we was able to recognize him for what he do for our youth. So, uh, we had a good weekend in the city of Gadsden. Looks like we're gonna have another good weekend this coming weekend, so thank you.
Councilman Bilson?
Uh, I'd like to also echo what Councilman Worth had said about Old School. My wife and I went out, and we met people that we hadn't seen in twenty, thirty years. So it's really for the older people more than the younger people, and, uh, you know, we're still around here. And I'd also like to bring to your attention about resurfacing of South Eleventh Street. Now, this council did not do that. The council preceding us did that, but it takes a lot of years to get things accomplished. You just can't up and do things. And I wanna thank the mayor and the preceding council for, for getting, putting this project on. And we also had to pass a penny sales tax to do that, part of it. And people just, a few people, now, not many, just raised cane about that. So one guy I know, he's, he's, he's well enough to pay it, and I told him, I said, I'd give you five to five dollars, and it's gonna cost you all year to pay for this penny taxes, and so he shut up. So it takes money to get these things done, and it's not our money, it's the citizens' money, you all's money. So we have to be very, very careful about spending your money, because you want us to spend it wisely. That's it.
Councilman Ken?
I'd also like to thank today, uh, Jackson Alabama City, also Cuthbert's Bakery in East Gadsden, and Popeyes in East Gadsden, and for the last eight or nine years, every time we call on for Youth in Government Day, they furnish all the breakfasts we had today, and I really appreciate all they do for us over there. Also was asked to announce that Libertarian Party of Edwell County asked that I would announce there'll be a question-answer event with candidates of municipal, county, and state elections. It will be Thursday, April twenty-sixth, this coming Thursday, at Edgewood Community Center from six-thirty to eight-thirty p.m. That's all we got.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah. Uh, Billy Harris is a brother of mine of Gadsden Edwell Patriot Association. He's been sitting out there for almost an hour, sending me to let the pleas, telling about Patriot God. So on behalf of the Gadsden Edwell Patriot Association, we want to send thanks to the city clerk's office, the council, the mayor's office, the workers, the players, uh, it was unreal, and it comes across, but the money that we raise, I want everybody to know again, is for the Ole Miss Park, Patriot Park, and Knocklila Falls. And it's also for the flags you see on Albert Raines Boulevard, Megan Boulevard, and a lot of the places around town, you'll see it. The fireworks on July the fourth. I think it's all important, uh, we appreciate everybody's backing, and, uh, just say again, thanks, y'all. Really.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, do wanna thank, uh, everyone who came out and supported, again, the old, old school flashback weekend, uh, the organizer, uh, Mr. Anthony Treadwell. Once again, that group, team leaders, did an outstanding, outstanding job. It was a very well-attended, uh, weekend, both for the games on Friday, the game on Saturday, and then the tailgating. Outstanding event. Um, and so we ask they continue to keep up the work, and, uh, good work, and, and I, I will tell these young people here, um, many of you, many of me, there were many young people in attendance at that, at that event as well, and I will tell the young people that I had a family member that was walking around with me, uh, and as, uh, I was introducing that family member to people, it, it really dawned on me just how rich the city of Gadsden is with talent. Um, you know, and I, I forget who it was that said it, but, well, the mayor said, you can be who you wanna be. I introduced this individual to a CEO, to a surgeon, to a, uh, to, to just a general practitioner doctor, uh, to a C, to a, uh, a CFO, CPA, a couple CPAs, um, and several executive directors. I mean, and all of those people have origin right here in, uh, right, right here in the city of, uh, right here in the city of Gadsden. There were a couple Fullburg colonels in the military that I introduced this family member to as well. We've got everything we need here in this city to be successful. Uh, it's just, uh, it, it just takes the opportunity for us to realize it and, and act on it. So, so young people, y'all can be who you wanna be and what you wanna be. It's just a, it has a lot to do with the choices. Um, so thank you, Ms. Katie Hardrick. And once again, you're a beast, you always have been, you do a great job with your students. It's by, it's not by accident that you get recognized year after year for being Teacher of the Year, and, and, and one of the best in your crowd, so we, we appreciate you for what you do. Um, and I know these kids do. Um, do wanna take the opportunity also to recognize Jenny Shaver, who's here. Raise your hand, Jenny. You can't be shy and run for office, honey. Jenny, uh, is running for state representative in, in her, in her area, so do wanna take the opportunity to just recognize her as a, recognize her as a, you know, recognize her presence here, and, uh, we wish you the best of luck. Um, I wanna also take the opportunity to thank everyone. As many of you know, I had a, a death in the family, and we laid the rest, one, one of my relatives on last week, my uncle, actually, Orlando Williams. And, uh, you know, a lot of people knew him as Dunk, uh, but I do wanna thank everyone for the thoughts and prayers, and I wanna use this as an opportunity to give some awareness, especially for those of us who are getting a little long in the tooth. Um, I, I, I want to extend the opportunity to ra- raise the awareness about preventive care. Um, you know, I, I started last year after having a, a family member diagnosed with colon cancer, to start doing a number of things in terms of testing and, and diagnostic treatment, just to, just to start really getting ahead of some things. Um, you know, my uncle suffered from pancreatic cancer, and, uh, as many of you know, that's the commonly, that's commonly referred to as the death wish, uh, because by the time you generally find out about it, it's too late. And so, um, you know, what I would like, uh, people to be aware of is that there are preventive things that you can do to stay ahead in terms of health. Um, we're, we try to be good consumers with a lot of things that really don't amount to nothing. You know, we, we try to be good car consumers, and food consumers, and good consumers over a bunch of things that don't amount to anything. Let's be good healthcare consumers, because we only get one of these bodies, and, uh, and it's incumbent upon us to take care of that body and be responsible for it. All right? Um, if there's nothing, if there's nothing else, sir?
Mr. President, may I make an announcement for you? I, I'm very, uh, delinquent in doing this, I was supposed to get, is it, is it okay with the council? I make an announcement, public announcement for the city.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to wait, uh, Mr. Harris, I apologize. Is there, I mean, what's?
I'm for it.
We just have to vote, to give him, since he didn't...
You gotta vote.
All right. All right, all in favor? All right, any opposition? All right, come on up, Councilman.
I'd just like to announce that, uh, and I apologize, I was supposed to get this announcement to Councilman Worth, and him to make it for us today, during council meeting, but on Thursday, uh, two days from now, the Gadsden City High School Auditorium, there will be a school safety forum presented by NAACP. We will have a representative from the Edwell County Board of Education, and a representative from the Gadsden City Board of Education there to present the safety items that are involved with schools, and they'll be there to answer your questions about safety in our schools here in Edwell County. It'll be six o'clock, a one-hour forum, so please come out and show your interest in what we need to know about safety in our schools here in, in the cit- in the city and the county of Edwell. But please, six o'clock, in Gadsden City High School Auditorium, Thursday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Make a motion to the governor. All right, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.
All right. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion, and we adjourn.
So moved.